Good morning, everyone. It's Monday, October 28, 2024, 9:00 AM. And we'll commence with our Wilson County Commissioners Court. Before we do that, we're going to have our prayer by Pastor Benny Areta from Florisville Christian Fellowship, and then we'll have our pledges.
Good morning, everyone.
We can bow our heads, and Father, we just want to say thank you, Lord Almighty God, for this day that you've given us, and we thank you, Lord Almighty God, as we gather, Lord God, and, Lord, the decisions that these men and women need to make, Lord God, we just thank you, Lord, for the job that they do. Lord, they've been chosen and anointed, Lord God, to make these choices for our county, and we just want to say thank you, Lord, that, Lord, they are mighty representatives, Lord God, of our county, and we declare that Wilson County is blessed, Father. So, Father, in this time of election, Lord God, we just pray, Lord God, that everything will flow correctly, Lord God, and those that you want in office will be in office. But we thank you for the men and the women, Lord God, that you've chosen here within our city, within our county, and, Father, we give you all the praise and all the glory, Lord God, that our county is blessed of you, and we thank you that your presence is here. Lord, may it always be at peace and in love, Lord, and in unity, and we just want to say thank you, Lord, for your prosperity over Wilson County. We give you all the praise and all the glory of all the decisions that need to be made. May it be done, Lord God, according to thy word for your glory. So, we thank you, Father, as we take this time, Lord, this meeting here, Lord God, takes that time, Lord God, to always put you first. So, we give you the praise, and we give you the glory, Father, in the mighty name of Jesus, Lord God, we pray, and everyone said?
Amen.
Want to just say also, Judge, thank you so much during the Passion. You allowed us to come and do our Passion of Christ drama, and just thank you for letting us use that front porch and the front entrance and the security that was here, so, thank you so much. All right, well, God bless y'all. All right, got some other engagements, if it's okay, I gotta, all right. God bless y'all, all right. Bye-bye.
(inaudible). We have a quorum.
Do we have any public comments? Public comments. Any certificate completions of awards?
Yes.
Not. Agenda item number five, Ms. Brenda Trevino. We're going to bypass that to 10 o'clock. We have a 10 o'clock open, RFQ 25-4,000 General Contract Services for the new construction of the Wilson County Expo Arena, and we'll return back to that at 10:00. Agenda item number six, discuss and take action on scheduled Commissioners Court dates for 2025. I have nothing that's changed on that, Commissioners. I'll entertain a motion for those dates.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 Commissioners Court regular meeting dates, with the exception of Monday, May 26, which is a holiday, be Tuesday, May 27.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. We have any other discussion on agenda item number six? Here none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, no. Ayes have it, motion passes. Agend? Yes. Agenda item number seven, we have Ms. Brenda Trevino, County Auditor, discuss and take action on applying for the 2025-26 Texas Veterans Commission Fund for Veterans Assistance Grant.
Good morning. So, this would be a first-time grant application for us through the Texas Veterans Commission. This is their fund for veterans assistance. It is for 2025 through 2026. The grant period would begin July 1 of 2025 and run through August 31 of 2026, with an option to renew after the one-year period. The application deadline is November the 12th. Myself, Kayla Prado, and our Veteran Service Office, Ray Areta, have been meeting extensively to go through it, because currently, our county doesn't have a program of this type. And so, what this grant would do would basically provide funding for the county to provide financial assistance to our veterans in our county. What Ms. Areta is looking to do is provide financial assistance that would be made up of services to include mortgage payments, rent, utilities, food, and transportation assistance, funeral expenses, and possibly some technology expenses. The eligible beneficiaries would be veterans, dependents, surviving spouses, who can demonstrate financial need. Now, Williamson County, and I happened to be in Williamson County two weeks ago, and I met with their auditor and their grant staff, who, they currently have this grant program, and it is an extensive amount of work in terms of establishing the actual program ourselves, and that's why it's taken some time, because I wanted to make sure that we have all of our decks in a row before we apply for the grant. This is a reimbursement, it's a 100% reimbursement grant with no matching funds required from the county, but we would have to front the money up front, and then, once we submit all of our required documentation, and it is a lot of documentation that's required, we actually have to have an application for the clients to fill out, which Williamson County was gracious enough to provide their template for us to use, so we can mirror theirs, you know, specific to our county. And so, one of the things that the grant covers is staff to manage the program, and Williamson County utilizes some of their grant funding to, for a VSO program, they call it a program manager, who is dedicated just to this program. So, Ms. Areta would like to use some of the grant funding, should we get awarded, in our application, seeking a full-time program staff just specific for this. Ms. Areta is looking at wanting to apply for $210,000 per year, and of that $210,000, we're looking at about a $45,000 salary for the support staff, plus all of the benefits. The grant also covers any type of office equipment, office supplies, that sort of thing. So, all of this, what I'm coming to the court for is to request your approval to apply for the grant. We will not know until May of 2025 whether or not we even get the grant, but the application for us to apply is not very lengthy. It's, you know, we've already gone through it. Williamson County has shared their application with us as well, so we can make sure that we answer the questions correctly, and then it's a wait-and-see, so, that's where we're at.
Employee will be in the VSO office, or?
Yes, reporting to the, reporting to the VSO, yes, sir.
And we're, internally, we're going to apply for this?
Yes, we would apply for this grant.
No, but I mean, Kayla, yourself?
Oh, yes.
You all are going to fill out the application?
We are.
And send it in?
Yes, sir.
If awarded, where do we get the funds that we're paying out?
Yeah, so, if we do get awarded, if we're notified in May, then my recommendation would be that we start the process of putting together the job description for a higher, potential higher date for July, because that's when we can start doing the, this grant requires a significant amount of reporting. It's required that we do monthly reporting, so the support staff would actually work with Kayla to gather all of that stuff. So, to answer your question, I would have to come back to the court in July or June and ask for a budget amendment, because we are going to have to front July, August, and September out of this fiscal year's budget and make a budget amendment, and so, I'd have to determine at that time if we have money still available in our contingency, which I, I'm thinking we will, but I can't, I don't know until we get there. But I would-
Worst-case scenario, we don't act until the new budget year, October 1?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. There are benchmarks that we are required to meet by the TBC. In other words, if you don't reach a certain amount of clients, so, Ray has to be very specific with the, with the commission in providing pretty close to accurate numbers. How many clients is he going to serve? How many mortgage payments are we making? And if you don't meet those certain requirements, then you don't get reimbursed, and so, Ray and I have had some pretty deep conversation that it, there's going to be a lot on his shoulders to ensure that we meet every single criteria to be eligible for reimbursement, because that's the risk that we're taking, that we're footing the bill up front on the expectation that we're going to get reimbursed, so. And he's pretty confident that he would be able to do that. Now, he can't do it alone, though, because it is going to require a significant amount of time. Now, if you remember, you approved for Ray to hire a part-time staff member right now in this current budget, which I believe he's in the process of doing that right now. I did have the conversation with him, if he wanted to consider transitioning and only applying for half of the salary and transitioning that position to a full-time position, but he feels like there is enough work to keep that part-time position current and then hire a full-time person to manage this program when that time comes, so.
That was going to be my question, since he's already got that part-time position, but you answered it.
Mm-hmm, yes, and we talked about perhaps if that part-time person turns out to want to apply for this position, you know, should we move forward with it, then, and if that's the right candidate to be, but with the intent that that position is 100% grant-funded, so, with the grant funds go away, that position goes away, because we wouldn't have a program anymore. Right. And that was his concern about moving the part-time, his current part-timer to a full-time, because he said, well, if the money goes away, then I have to reduce a full-timer back to a part-time, and he didn't want to take that risk, which is understandable.
How many other counties are using this program besides Williamson?
That I do not know. I know that the Texas Veterans Commission has $31 billion to give out, and they are really pushing Texas counties to apply for the funding, so, and because it's not a very lengthy, you don't have to write a 12-page narrative, I think they're making it a very simple process for counties to apply. They just require a lot of, if you get the money, you need to, yeah. And the other good thing is, I received a book of like 70-page, the requirements are not met, are not made by Wilson County, the eligibility requirements. Those are provided to us by the TBC. We just put it into our own little booklet-type thing, but TBC is very specific on who's eligible, what is eligible, and what must be provided by the client in order to apply for financial assistance. So, they have to provide all types of documentation, and that's what we use to request reimbursement.
So, with that, do these veterans have to have a certain rating?
I-
Is it just any veteran?
No, there, yeah, there is, there is a laundry list of requirements that need to be met by the vets, and a lot of that is, I'm not knowledgeable in what all of that means, I just know that Ray is, and so, he knows the different titles of all the different forms that they have to provide, and whether they were honorably discharged, all of that kind of stuff, yeah.
Just because of-
Right. There, and also, putting it, setting in some parameters that, you know, veterans, there's only like a one-time-a-year assistance for mortgage, but it does help offset for vehicle payments, or if there are veterans or dependents that need computers to help them look for jobs, or different things like that. I mean, there's a multitude of eligible uses for the funds, which I've already provided to Ray, so that if this comes to fruition, then the support staff would know exactly what's eligible and what's not. The other good thing, too, Ray and I went through, so, for food assistance, it's interesting, because it's not, you just give them a $100 HEB gift card, and they go get whatever they want. There's actually a food voucher system, and there are eligible food items and unallowable food items, so, it's very, very detailed from the Texas Veteran Commission, so we just need to make sure that we stay on top of it. And with Kayla's help, Kayla would be managing all of the reporting in conjunction with the new staff, if that's the case.
So, I mean, I don't have anything to do with that?
No, sir.
Well, other than make sure the people that report to him are doing what they're supposed to do, getting all the paperwork to them that they need to support or-
You mean Ray?
Yes.
Ray, yes, but your, your question is EMC, and that's no. Yes.
Who were you asking?
About, see if they're, oh, around round people, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, no, because this is one application that we felt that it's not needed for them to write the application itself, because it's very simple, and that's something that Kayla and I can put together, so, and then, it saves the county from having to pay a 5% administration fee for this one.
Any indications on how many people would be served?
Yes. benefit.
Eligible?
And of that, 90% would actually be veterans, and the other 10% being, yes, dependents or surviving spouses.
That doesn't work out to a lot of money per person.
It, it doesn't. The way the application is set up, and I'll go over to you, so, the intent is, when you're applying for it, so, for example, if we are applying for, in the different categories, so, for mortgage assistance, he's requesting fif, a quantity of 50 at $1,000, so, the maximum that TBC allows for any payment to any veteran is $1,000. So, for example, for mortgage, we would have in our budget 50 mortgage payments valued at $1,000 for a total of $50,000. And then, he's asking for 10 food and grocery vouchers at $500 apiece. It also covers funeral expenses, 10 at $1,000, rent, 27 clients at $1,000, 20 clients for utilities at $1,000, vehicles, which also covers gas for their own vehicles, 10 clients at $1,000. So, we, he broke it down that way. I did sit with him to ask him if he knew what the need was, so, how do we come up with these numbers? And he, he did mention to me that, over the course of the last year especially, he has had phone calls, and when he meets with these veterans, asking for financial assistance, which is a process that we don't have right now. So, he was trying to track all of that, and he's very confident. I did tell him that if we apply for the $210,000 and we get the $210,000, we need to make sure that we meet every, every benchmark in order to get reimbursed. So, we're going by his, his knowledge that he can meet all of these parameters.
What's a full-time salary with benefits?
It's about, we average, we kind of, it's about $18,000 in addition to the 45, so, almost 70,000 to 75,000 would be toward a salary.
With about $40,000 for the veteran?
Correct. I think the total that, that he has here is, well, no, he didn't add it all up, but yeah, 50.
Would have been good if it was $20,000.
Yeah, I'm not sure where he's at.
Well, any of them we can help, if higher than zero is, is good, so.
Yeah, and there's other indirect costs, like for marketing, printing, and that sort of thing, too, that doesn't equate to, you know, a whole lot of money, about $1,500, but it would be funding an entire program for the county, basically, and after year one, if we meet certain benchmarks and eligibility criteria, then it's an automatic renewal for one more year. If you have any reporting, or you're not using the money by certain benchmarks, then they will not renew it, so.
Does it indicate how fluid, what if you have more needs for food than you do for car payments? Will it move back and forth, or is it?
It's, they do allow for grant amendments. If we find that the need is greater in one area than another, it would just have, it would be a process of me or Kayla contacting the commission to make the modifications on our end. So, I think, well, Ray believes that if this gets kicked off, and if we are awarded, once the marketing begins, he feels like the influx of veterans needing, you know, financial assistance is, would come, so we wouldn't have an issue of not, of not being able to provide the assistance that's needed.
So, this is automatically renewed, and he sees that he needs more funding, 26, 27 timeframe?
When the application opens again, and you're asking if we can apply for more funding, we can. You can act, yeah, not, no, once this is awarded for the two years, that's, it automatically renews for the same amount the next year, so it would be, if we were awarded $200,000 in '25, it would be $200,000 in 2026. It would just be up to us if we needed to make any modifications within the different script, categories. Then, when 2027's applications open up this time during that year, if we feel, felt like we needed to increase the ask, then we certainly would do it at that time, or decrease if we found that we, there wasn't as great of a need. But we won't have really a lot of the answers until they go through their entire process and we find out in May whether or not we're awarded.
It's exclusive to veterans in Wilson County?
This program, yes, it's, it would be specific to Wilson County, correct.
Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion on agenda item.
I'll make a motion to apply for the 25-26 Texas Veterans Commission Fund for Veterans Assistance.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Martin. Any other discussion on agenda item number seven? Here none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, no. Ayes have it, motion passes. Agenda item number eight, we have Ms. Leann Brooks, Florisville North Elementary Choir, discuss and take action on Florisville North Elementary Choir's request to use the courthouse lawn on December 19, 2024, at 6:00 PM for their Christmas performance. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you, Judge. Yes, so, we have set a date now. We are looking at December 19 at 6:00 PM, and are asking permission to use the courthouse lawn and the decorations for our Christmas performance.
I have a calendar, what date does that fall on? What day is that?
I believe it's a Thursday.
Thursday, okay. My Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion on agenda item number eight.
I'll make a motion to allow the Florisville North Elementary Choir to use the courthouse lawn on December 19, 2024, at 6:00 PM.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. Any other discussion on agenda item number eight? Here none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, no. Ayes have it, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
We're looking forward to a great concert.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, thank you.
We have Ms. Brenda Trevino, County Auditor, to discuss and approve the resolution of the Indigent Defense Grant Program for fiscal year '25 formula grant.
Yes, this is for the formula grant, so it sounds very similar to the TIDC one that you approved a couple of Commissioners Courts ago. So, this is the 2025 Indigent Defense Grant Program, whereas, under the provisions of the Texas Government Code, Section 79.037, and Texas Administrative Code, Chapter 173, counties are eligible to receive grants from the Texas Indigent Defense Commission to provide improvements in indigent defense services in the county. And whereas, this grant program will assist the county in the implementation and improvement of the indigent criminal defense services in this county, and whereas, Wilson County Commissioners Court has agreed that in the event of loss or misuse of the funds, Wilson County Commissioners assures that the funds will be returned in full to the Texas Indigent Defense Commission. Now, therefore, be it resolved in order that the county judge of this county is designated as the authorized official to apply for, accept, decline, modify, or cancel the grant application for the Indigent Defense Formula Grant Program and all other necessary documents to accept said grant, and be it further resolved that the county auditor is designated as the financial officer for this grant adopted this 28th day of October. And this is a renewal, it's not anything that's new.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion, Commissioners, for agenda item number nine.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the Indigent Formula Grant Defense Program for fiscal year 2025. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Perdola and seconded by Commissioner King. Are there any other discussions on agenda item number nine?
And so, this is all administered internally?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, no. Ayes have it, motion passes. Move to agenda item number 10, we have Jim Stewart, our County Sheriff, for a Sheriff's Office Monthly Report.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Looking at this monthly report, it's running pretty much average. We have, I've been giving it long enough that it basically runs, month-to-month, we're holding average on almost everything across the board. So, today, I'd kind of like to look at, would y'all still want to get this every month, or would you rather I look at just significant things and bring you a more specific report? Because this does run pretty much month-to-month, numbers are almost always the same, they, it's got to be where it's pretty redundant, and so, today, I was looking to see if y'all would actually want me to change it up, or continue to send it in this format.
I kind of like the format.
Okay.
Me, too.
All right.
Yep.
Well, good deal, because like, this month, of course, we had total reportable calls of 504 in September, non-reportable calls, 1,028, total number of calls, 1,532, for a total of 14,347 year-to-date. That's quite a few, that's quite a few calls handled by my officers in an eight-month, nine-month period. They are out there having to work pretty hard every day. Livestock calls, 54 for the month of September, animal complaints, 35, mental health calls was down to 10. Actually, the mental health stuff right now, we've entered, I think it's us and Florisville PD, with STRAC and Communa Real, we have entered a test project to try to shorten the timeframe, make it more efficient, and we just started that the 1st of September, and we'll see how that goes.
Who's our representative from Communa Real, he's lieutenant, isn't he the mental health law enforcement?
Steve Moore.
Yeah.
Steve Moore is through, and he's part of this program.
Okay.
He actually, with us and them, we all set, set together, and STRAC, STRAC is the one that put it out, they wanted to utilize the system that EMS uses in order to facilitate locations of patients and things like that, and they said, you know, this would work for mental health, too, so, they, they're trying, we're a pilot program for them.
So, you're going through MedCom?
Yes, basically, yes. Supposedly, and we've used it a couple times already, I know of, I just had their board meeting last Friday, when I talked to Steve while we, while I was there, and they've utilized it, and it actually sped up the process of us handling them at the scene. Also, it allows us sometimes to not even have to request a transport, because they're able to handle it straight through there, through phones and iPads and stuff like that. Looks, it looks pretty promising, which would cut down on the total time we spend on a mental health call.
Sheriff, I tried to get ahold of that Ms. Buck, you know, the one that we're sitting down with?
Yes, on the animal.
And she didn't call me back. I still think that maybe you and I need to have a sit-down with her and see if we can-
I'll reach out to her this week and see if I can get-
Called her Friday, left-
patients and things like that. And they said, you know, this would work for mental health too. So they, they're trying, we're a pilot program for them.
So you're going through MedCom?
Yes, basically, yes. Supposedly, and we've used it a couple times already, I know of. I just had their board meeting last Friday, when I talked to Steve while we, while I was there. And they've utilized it, and it actually sped up the process of us handling them at the scene. Also, it allows us sometimes to not even have to request a transport, because they're able to handle it straight through there, through phones and iPads and stuff like that. Looks, it looks pretty promising, which would cut down on the total time we spend on a mental health call.
Sheriff, I tried to get ahold of that Ms. Buck, you know, the one that we're sitting down with?
Yes, on the animal.
And she didn't call me back. I still think that maybe you and I need to have a sit-down with her and see if we can...
I'll reach out to her this week and see if I can get...
Called her Friday, left a message, but I, I think there's something that could be worked out there.
Okay. I'll, I'll reach out to her and see if I can get her to agree to a meeting with us. And when I make contact, I'll get ahold of you and we'll come up with a date that's...
Come over here and have a meeting with her and...
That would work. Because we, we do need to do something with the animal control, and while we got something moving forward, we ought to keep after it. The only other thing I got today is I, I know on the jail side, I leave that out of here sometimes, but two weeks ago, I had an inspection at the jail. Results of the inspection, I was non-compliant for a couple administrative issues. They've already been dealt with. If we're not in compliance now, we should be very shortly. I've already sat down with the jail administrator, come up with a plan to make sure that doesn't recur. And the other thing, I was kind of pleased with the jail inspector, is he commended the jail staff for their, the attitude and, and the atmosphere in the jail between the inmates and the staff was very good. And he also was very pleased with our maintenance program in that old jail.
Looking at the bills, who was it that came in? Was that for the doors and the locks and everything else?
Guardian, guardians in there doing all the new cameras.
Got you, okay.
Yes, we just changed out the whole camera system in there.
Are, are they going to be the same camera sheriff that we're going to put?
I, I believe, I believe it's the same camera, same system is going to go into the, I think, district court, and I think they're actually looking at here too, right? Yes.
Okay, very good.
Company seems to be very on top of things, very pleased with the quality of the cameras, the audio and video, very good.
How's your chat? Everything good?
Jail, I'm overstaffed by one, I got to fix that. I've got two in background right now at the sheriff's office. If I fill those two, I think I will be three short, maybe four, I can't, I'm, I'm not sure of the numbers, I have to look. But I'm getting, I'm getting closer, and I have a couple of applications that look good too, that we haven't got to yet.
Seized a lot of weapons this, this month.
Those were that gentleman that threatened the school in Laverne, they all came from one place.
Got it.
Anything else, Mr. Sheriff? Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Agenda item number eleven, we have Ms. Dawn Palazek Barnett, our County Tax Assessor Collector. She has a report, she did let me know she would not be making this meeting this morning, but there's a report in there that you all can take a look at. Agenda item number twelve, Ms. Lou Sarato, permitting and development director, twelve A, temporary water line permit, information only, A-one permit ninety-three, Nexon Water Solutions, County Road two fifty-two, two thirty-six.
Yes, good morning. This permit has already been approved and reviewed by Commissioner King and was brought to court just for information purposes. It doesn't require an action.
Okay. The agenda item number twelve B, utility permit, discuss and approve, permit number one, uh, one, seven eighty-one, Sunco Precinct Four, County Road two fifty-two.
Yes, I do need to make a correction on that, that is in precinct two, not precinct four.
Okay, so we'll go to both of them, permit seven eighty-one and seven eighty-two, City Florisville Precinct Two, five sixty-two, County Road three oh two, twelve B, one and two.
So these have already been reviewed by the commissioner as well? Yeah, he's gone to the site to look and to see where they propose to put all these lines down.
So I, I did look at County Road two fifty-two and County Road three oh two.
Okay.
City of Florisville's a little bit late, they actually did theirs. That's something we gotta, gotta watch out for, so. Do not right away, and I understand that, but still gotta go through a process.
You probably need to look into implementing fees for permits that are pulled after the fact.
Yeah. And do you know what their separation distance is between a sewer main and a water main?
No, so I couldn't see that part, because...
There are T C U requirements on that, so, I mean, it's good that it's over, but there's still separation distance requirement. You know, and I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have accepted this permit because they didn't put any dimensions on here.
Where it's at?
For the one by the city?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's their responsibility.
But whenever I went out there the other day, whenever I caught them digging up right away, and I stopped the process, or I thought I did, they continued, even though I said no. It's right next to me, that's why. Yeah.
But as, as in the other permit, it puts, you know, it's four feet below the bottom of the ditch, so they should have all that in here and all their things labeled out there, so that, so that we can see. Because one thing is, is we want to make sure that water line's at least two feet below the surface, so.
Has Florisville ever caught up on their past due?
I'm sorry?
Has Florisville ever gotten caught up on their past due permits?
Yes, they are caught up with the food inspection permits, yes.
So I'll make a motion to approve permit seven eighty-one, Sunco Water for Precinct Two, County Road two fifty-two, and permit seven eighty-two, City of Florisville, Precinct Two, five sixty-two, County Road three oh two.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Martin. Any other discussion on twelve B, one and two? If you're none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, no. Eyes have it, motion passes. Thank you, ma'am.
Please don't forget to redo and bring back to court the private road naming.
I have it here.
You do? Okay, I, I don't know...
Since it got approved at last commissioner's court, I didn't put it on the agenda.
Well, yeah, but I think we were all confused as, as whose it is. I think to be perfectly clear, I'd like to bring it back on the agenda. I don't think there's any rush to do it, the road's name's been assigned.
So you'd like me to add it on?
I would like to put it on next time's agenda, please.
Yes, because I do have the corrective paperwork here, but I can put it back on the next commissioner's court agenda.
Thank you. Agenda item number thirteen, we have Ms. Christina Moots, County Treasurer, discuss and take action on the County Treasurer's financial report.
Good morning. In your binders, you will see this morning, I am reporting for the month of September As always, the layout of the report stays the same. You'll see all of our checking accounts listed with our debits and our credits, our CDs that we have as well. Followed by our investments, Texpool, Texas Class, as well as F and C, and the interest that it has earned for this month, still doing well. And then followed with the next page of outstanding debts. You will notice on our lease purchases, we did pay off the collection facility, track loader, so that will come off my list, won't be on there next month. And then followed up with what I would call the Treasurer's Month Report, or at least titled that, listing all our funds with their beginning and ending balance and credits I've also included since the ending of this third quarter, September twenty-twenty-four, my quarterly investment report, that is behind my monthly one. And again, that just summarizes everything that I've reported to y'all from July till now of all the interest that has earned in all of our accounts. I also show for those last three months what the interest rate was on the accounts. And at the very end for that quarter, what we have earned in interest. So again, it's just an overview of the last three months. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
On the Rimshaw Place, do we have a cattle lease on that place still?
That is a good question. I don't think on that place.
I don't think so.
Not on that one that I'm aware of. We do have, it's not that one, but the property...
Collection facility.
Yes, thank you, thank you, spit that out. Yeah, I'm like, what am I trying to say? Collection, yes.
I don't, I don't think we have anyone at the Rimshaw Place leasing that land.
Not that I'm aware of.
That I know of. There was somebody that was hunting, leased it for hunting at one time, but that didn't get renewed as part of it.
Okay. And if that's the case, way before my time, so.
I've never seen any cattle out there before, there may have been.
Do they have cattle out there?
No, that, I was just asking if there was.
Just throw in, just keep me on my toes.
I don't think there's ever been.
Not, yeah. I'd say not that I'm aware, but if it was before my time, then I wouldn't, can't answer that.
We would know if we had to meet.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion on agenda item number thirteen.
Motion that we accept the Treasurer's report as presented.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. Do we have any other discussion on agenda item thirteen? If you're none, I want to call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, no. Eyes have it, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number fourteen, we have Ms. Jaylen Butterford, our Human Resource Specialist, presentation of parole and personnel changes.
Good morning. Logan Peralta was hired as a patrol deputy for the Sheriff's Department, making twenty-five thirty-three per hour, or fifty-five thousand three twenty-six thirty-two annually, effective October eighteenth. Kaitlin Kylek was hired as an administrative assistant to the H.R. Department, making eighteen ninety-three per hour, effective October twenty-third. Serena Hernandez resigned from her position with the Sheriff's Department, effective October fifteenth. And Timothy Taubert was terminated from his position as road hand for Precinct Three, effective October seventeenth.
Any questions, Ms. Butterford? Thank you, ma'am. Agenda item number fifteen, we have Ms. Brenda Trevino, County Auditor, discuss and take action on county bills.
Okay, so I have bills totaling five hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and forty-three
All right, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion for agenda item number fifteen.
Make a motion that we take action on paying the county bills as presented by the auditor.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner King. We have any other discussion regarding agenda item number fifteen?
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
The, the reimbursements for billing out to the other agencies that use the radio system, there are no problems with those that have all been paid on time?
Reversements to the agencies?
Right.
LCI?
LCI, the, LCI?
Oh, yes, yeah, no, those have been coming in, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? If you're none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, no. Eyes have it, motion passes. We are going to recess until ten o'clock, it is nine forty-six A.M., to move back to agenda item number five.